Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome to the City of Shelton a study session, commission meeting study session. First item on business here, we need to amend our agenda to include a letter of support for the Squaxon Tribe concerning a grant that they are looking into, and we thought it was a good idea to support them on this. And so, we've signed that, and we are going to present that letter to them at some time. Are we doing that today?
Yes.
Okay, shall we? I'll turn it over to Assistant Manager Vicki Look.
Okay. This letter of support is addressed to Ms. Penn, and it states, "The City of Shelton is pleased to offer our support for the Squaxon Island Tribe's Bureau of Indian Affairs Rights Protection Implementation Funding Proposal. Besides providing critical shellfish resources to the tribe, Puget Sound is a key growing area for many small and large shellfish companies. Annually, we harvest approximately four million pounds of manila clams, of which 1.5 to 2 million pounds come from Oakland Bay, along with approximately 3.5 million Kumamoto oysters. This is one of the most significant shellfish-producing bays in Washington and in the country. Oakland Bay's shellfish production supports hundreds of jobs, our farms in the processing plant, in distribution, and sales, and restaurants, and markets throughout the world. We are very interested in supportive of this proposal by the Squaxon Island Tribe. And sincerely," this is from our commission, and it is signed Gary H. Cronk's, Mayor."
From all of the Squaxon Island tribal members, we really appreciate the support in our proposal. We have limited funds available for environmental research this year, and we're all struggling to pool together to really make the most of the funds that we have available to us. So this letter of support really, it speaks miles for all of the work that we're doing, especially here in Oakland Bay.
Thank you very much. All right, next is some commission reports and the first report is going to be from the Mason County Historical Society, and the second quarter report by Kristin.
As always, thank you for your support for the Mason County Historical Society. The second quarter at the museum has been extremely busy, not just at home. The last time I said my daughter was just born, and now she's crawling, but at the museum as well. We've had a lot of new and exciting developments. In April, we concluded our annual fund drive with close to $11,000 in donations. Although we were excited by the outpouring of support from the community, this did leave us $4,000 short of our goal of 15,000. We're currently planning new fundraisers coming up to bridge this gap. In April, Mike Fredson gave his annual downtown historical walk, and this year the weather was nice, and we had about 30 in attendance. We also had a second show of the Search for the Antlers Hotel Documentary at Shelton Cinemas, which was very well attended. In total, we had 475 attendees at the event for the two showings. In May, we had a booth at the Matlock Old Timers Fair, where we sold local history books. This is our largest book-selling opportunity of the year, and with the help from several volunteers that run the booth, we brought in over $900 for our ongoing operations. Our staff and volunteers were also hard at work, bringing us up to date with increasing our online presence through posting historical pictures and descriptions of Mason County buildings to historypin.org. You can go on and see an overlay of historical photos on the current buildings, making our newsletter available via email, and revamping our website. Now, members may sign up online, donate, register for future events, or even reserve Paul Bunyan and Babe the Blue Ox for their future event. In June, we brought out our Forest Festival Queen portraits and other displays, and Paul Bunyan and Babe the Blue Ox joined the Forest Festival Parade, and we were awarded with the 2017 First Prize for Motorized Automotive in the parade. We were also the host of the South Sound Heritage Association Meeting and provided a presentation on the history of the Forest Festival. In June, of course, we also had our annual downtown car show. Despite the 90-degree-plus heat, we had 263 cars register for the event. We raised over $11,500 for the museum, and we are so appreciative to see how the community supports the event. In recent news, we were able to have Speaker David Berger come out and talk about his book Razor Clams: Buried Treasure of the Pacific Northwest, courtesy of the Humanities of Washington Speakers Bureau. Berger gave an interesting presentation and gave homage to Jim Batstone, the Shelton native that invented the clam gun. Berger made a point to say he would like to bring back to life this lost piece of history. The Mason County Museum plans to create a display of the original sandpiper design of the clam gun with patent information and information about Batstone. Also this month, all of our hard work towards preparing our museum assessment through the American Alliance of Museums culminated in our site visit by Washington State Historical Society Assessor, Lissa Kramer. Lissa toured our museum and our four storage facilities and offered many suggestions on how best to care for our collection. A full report will be completed that we will receive in 10 to 12 weeks. The report will contain priorities for caring for our collection, as well as organizational changes that might improve our operations. Recently, we have also concluded entering in previous year's accessions from 1974 to 2016 into an Excel spreadsheet format for our ongoing digital inventory project. At our last board meeting, we presented the South Sound Heritage Award for Excellent Service to our volunteer, Don Pogreba, for all of his hard work on this project. We have recently been approved for a grant through the Historic Preservation Commission to have this information transferred into Past Perfect Software, which will allow us to enter photos of each item, keep more complete accession, deaccession, and loan records, as well as provide opportunity to have some of our archives available online in the future. Also looking forward, on August 20th, Liz Arbah will be giving a tour of her home, which is the historic Saul Reed House on North First Street. The home was originally built in 1929 for Saul Reed and his new bride Patricia. Liz will be giving a short history of the house and its former occupants. Several members will be meeting at the museum to carpool due to the limited parking. Also, on Thursday, September 21st, we'll be having a fundraiser at Zinn's Restaurant at 5:00 p.m. We are currently selling tickets on our website and at the museum. Zinn Dwelly is retiring for good, and so we are excited to have one last celebration with her, and she has been kind enough to open her doors and provide a seafood dinner in order to support our organization. Also coming up, on Sunday, September 24th, we will have artist Bob Chamberlain, that has done the mural outside our building, coming into display and talk about his new series of maritime northwest watercolor art. In the last quarter, we received 1,056 visitors, with 207 from out of town, 78 from out of state, and three from out of country. We also received 1,500 attendees to our downtown annual car show.
And was that both reports?
No.
Oh. Thank you.
Well, as usual, it sounds like you've been extremely busy. Busy, busy. I had a couple of questions for you. The tour of the Saul Reed House, which date?
That's going to be August 20th.
Okay. And maybe that was my, oh, changing over the software, is that all being done by volunteers?
No, it's actually, we got grant money to have it sent to Past Perfect, and they have conversion specialists do that for us.
Oh, wonderful.
So it's going to be 80 hours of work plus that they're going to be doing, because it's thousands of records from '74 to 2016, so.
That's amazing.
Yeah. We're super excited, because it's going to provide a level of organization that we've never had.
And will that be available online, or will?
Eventually, we'll have some archives through the Past Perfect Software available online, but at first, we'll just have a more searchable archive. I mean, historically at the museum, we had a card catalog system. So, over the past two years, we've been entering in all of this information into Excel, and so now people will be able to come in, the public will be able to come in and search for whatever, by items, subject, whatever they're interested in, date ranges, and we can look it up in Past Perfect.
That is amazing. Congratulations.
We're super excited about that. Thank you.
Congratulations.
So, I think that's, you were going to do the other report on the car show?
Yes. The Mason County Historical Society would like to thank you for your support of our 17th Annual Downtown Car Show and Ice Cream Social that took place on June 25th, 2017. Despite the extreme summer heat, we had 263 cars registered at the event. In the months preceding the car show, we had many people calling for information and making advance plans to attend the event. We also had many people say that they come every year. Even though there were fewer cars registered than last year, we were able to make up our donations through extra donations given at registration, and a very successful pie and ice cream social at the museum. We were able to raise $11,500 to support the Mason County Historical Society. Our car show planning committee, otherwise known as Friends of the Museum, works all year long to advertise the event, gain sponsors, and collect donations for the raffle. This year, we had over $6,000 of donated prizes for the raffle. The Mason County Historical Society also spent close to $4,000 for marketing and festival items, all within the local community. In addition to what is spent on the car show, there are many in-kind donations from businesses and citizens in the area, plus over 2,000 hours of donated labor. This includes 46 volunteer judges and over 50 volunteers that donate to the pie and ice cream social. This year, the car show committee created a map of businesses that were staying open specifically for the car show. After the conclusion of our car show, our board president polled those businesses, business owners, on how they felt about the car show and if they would stay open again. We got an overwhelming amount of positive feedback, and many business owners said it was a great exposure. We continue to refuse outside vendors in order to support local business on event day. We estimate that the event brought in close to 1,500 attendees, with 400 of these traveling from 50 miles or more. Of the attendees, we estimate that 13 included paid overnight stays, 50 unpaid overnight stays, and 30 were from out of state or the country. The community support the car show receives is what truly makes it a success. This continues to be Mason County Historical Society's biggest fundraiser of the year and allows us to keep our day-to-day operations going. So we want to give thanks to our City Commissioners and the City of Shelton for their continued support for both the Mason County Historical Society, Friends of the Museum, and the Shelton Downtown Car Show. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I ate some of that pie and ice cream. That was nice.
Thank you. Amazing, amazing job.
Thank you very much, Kristin. All right, and next is, it looks like we have an Employee of the Month to announce. Yeah, I got it written down here. I didn't know if she knew or not, but it looks like she did. This is Nola. Congratulations.
She knows I dragged her down here. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I am very happy to announce that our Employee of August is Megan Croson. Megan Croson, why don't you come up here, Megan?
I'm sorry, I thought it was Nola, that one. Okay.
(laughing).
Okay.
Megan Croson joined the City of Shelton on April 1st, 2010. She started her work here as a staff accountant. She was later promoted to a financial analyst and is currently serving as our city's accounting manager. As everyone knows, 2016 was a year of change, not all of it positive and fun, and Megan has done an outstanding job of standing in the gap and leading the finance team through a rather challenging and drawn-out transition in the finance director role. One of Megan's most recent accomplishments was working with all of our employee groups and facilitating the transition to direct deposit for everyone. As a result, our employees will save dollars and hours every year by not having to deposit their paychecks. Our payroll processing is now more efficient, and our internal financial controls are stronger, reducing our risk for abuse and fraud. Megan did such an excellent job on this project, she recently received an award from the National Automated Clearinghouse Association, which is the banking, or the national banking organization that manages direct deposit in the banking systems. In addition to demonstrating a high aptitude for absorbing new information and expanding her knowledge and skill base, Megan has consistently demonstrated diligence, a strong work ethic, a high level of professionalism, and a willingness to do whatever it takes to keep things in finance running smoothly. She is my right hand, and I am honored to present her with Employee of the Month Award.
(applause). Good job. Do you want to talk? Yeah. (laughing). Thank you for all your hard work, Megan.
Congratulations.
All right, next is our weekly commission report. So, Commissioner Moore, do you have some activities to talk about?
I do.
I had a meeting this morning with some potential rail company investors, so that movement is continuing. Tomorrow, I have a Mason Transit Authority board meeting. I'm hoping to make the Olympic College Welding Shop ribbon cutting as well. They both are at the same time, of course. On Wednesday, I have a meeting with a constituent. On Friday, there is a ribbon cutting at Tractor Supply, which is exciting, but also there is a Day of Caring, which I'm happy to participate in that. I will be participating with Shelton to the Top in cleaning up a homeless encampment. United Way is a local organization as well, an international organization for those who don't know. They do good things for our community and have been here for many, many years, and I have been honored to be a past employee and also to have participated in many, many Day of Caring projects. So I'm really happy about that, and congratulations to United Way of Mason County and Shelton to the Top for once again participating. I will be gone next Monday. I will be on vacation, because I will be going down to see the solar eclipse. Yay, so excited. I would just like to remind everybody, we will have a percentage of coverage. Please protect your vision. Sight is precious, and sunglasses are not enough. So enjoy the eclipse, but be sure to wear proper eyewear. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. So, tomorrow morning, are we having our little retreat tomorrow? All right, tomorrow night?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
You'll be at that one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just didn't put it on my calendar yet.
Okay, so tomorrow morning, I will be at the city retreat in the morning, and I will be attending that ribbon cutting at Olympic College in the afternoon. Thursday, I'll have a staff briefing, and on Thursday night, I'll be attending a chamber event at Mason Lake, and that completes our weekly commission reports. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our City Manager, Ryan Wheaton, and he is going to have a memorandum of understanding to talk to us about. All public comment? Oh, I see it's wedged right in there between the last two things I said. If there's any public comment, this is the opportunity, we do that. So let's do that one first.
Randy Lewis.
Randy Lewis.
First of all, let me say that I believe the current commission is saving the city, and the Public Works Department is doing an amazing job fixing roads, getting grants, and so on. Our comments on the solid waste deal with Mason County garbage is just one issue we happen to have concerns about. We believe that deal has systemic, short- and long-term adverse consequences to rate payers, many or most who are the poor in our community. We will continue to educate the public on the garbage deal, and are confident that a city commission, present or future, will act to mitigate the short- and long-term adverse effects of the deal. To those who say the decision has been made, move on. My response is, that is what my friend Jackie McElveney was told about the prior school board decision to close the pool. In fact, as you know, this commission itself already changed a prior commission's decision to implement a constantly increased, increasing bake-in-stone sewer rate schedule, and is pursuing analysis to further change this schedule, perhaps even increase rates. I supported the current commissioner's decision to freeze sewer rates and support the effort to better understand the implications of changing the rates further. The prior analysis to support the 10-year sewer rate schedule contained inconsistent and faulty assumptions. Some of the information presented to support the garbage rate deal was also based on faulty assumptions, which we have and will talk about, but will not get into today. If anyone would like to see my backup for the prior two statements, let me know, and I'll be happy to walk you through it. All are welcome. I think the Shelton Out Loud meeting is a great gesture. Personally, I think it would be good to do it more often, perhaps quarterly. Here among some of what we believe are publicly unanswered questions on the garbage deal, feel free to answer them in any venue, not just the upcoming Shelton Out Loud forum. First question, what is the city planning to do with the funds from the $1 million loan and subsequent annual $500,000 utility tax funded by the 31% utility tax? Second question, how is the dollar amount calculated using the 31% utility tax? In other words, is it calculated on what Mason County garbage is getting, plus the utility tax, what I call the pretend base rate, or is it something else? That's a question we'd like to have answered. And finally, why was the CPI cap taken away in yours 11 to 20? Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So now, it's your turn, Mr. Wheaton. We'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. We're going to invite Kyle Cronk, who is the President of South Sound YMCA, to come up. We have talked a few times about the potential of partnering with YMCA. A few months ago, the three commissioners decided to provide $5,000 worth of funding toward the capital feasibility study that South Sound YMCA and SHARC are working through now. The next step for them and their endeavors is really finding a location, and as we discussed this last month, we have been talking about a property that you see highlighted in the map that you have. So we are on Wallace-Nielan Boulevard and Shelton Springs Road, next to the junior high school. And what you have in front of you today is a memorandum of understanding that we are briefing today, hopefully going to vote on next week. And a couple of the key points here, one, this would be a memorandum of understanding that within five to seven years, the Shelton branch of the South Sound Y would be built on that location. In accordance if that happened, we would then enter into contract negotiations where we'd be looking at a 25- to 30-year lease at a dollar a year that the YMCA would pay to the city. Additionally, we are encouraged by the fact that the capital feasibility study will drive the direction that the building takes, and the amenities that the building is created within will fit what the community not only needs, but what we're able to get in terms of the feasibility study when they go around and do that work. So, those are the main nuts and bolts. Do you have anything that you want to add, Kyle?
Other than thank you, I mean, this is a huge, bold step in the relationship and partnership going forward. I mean, just looking at this map here and highlighting the city and the YMCA logo together is a big step in the projects, as a catalyst in the project going forward. So this will provide a ton of momentum. Thank you for the $5,000 as well. We have $63,000 in firm pledges, so in the proximity of the schools, where this is located in the city, is going to drive a lot of traffic to this location. So it really is perfect. Answering questions.
We've looked at this at staff level for a few months. This was first brought to us maybe six months ago, when the SHARC group came to us. This location is currently owned by the Water Department, which became an issue in terms of us looking to sell it, that it couldn't be sold out of the general fund. It's actually owned by utility. So there's still some to work through with that, but from Public Works to Community Development Finance, we've all looked at this and tried to figure out if there's another use that we had in mind, and at this point, we can't figure out anything that would be a higher use than this.
Well, I personally am thrilled that we're entering into this partnership. I've known people that have been involved with trying to help this community provide activities for families and young people, and this is what cities should be doing. And so if there's anything done right, this one, please, mark it in your calendars, it was done right. So I am 100% in support of this and think this is an excellent opportunity for the City of Shelton.
I would second that, and I can't even tell you how excited I am. It's been a long time coming, and it was one of those things that started off as a dream, and citizens working together. Julie's been amazing working towards this. This will potentially make our community far more attractive to other investors and to families moving here, as well as it will help with our community health improvement plan goals. It's an amazing opportunity for Shelton, and I thank you so much for coming to Shelton. So I'm 100% behind this, too. I'm very excited.
All right, it appears we concur on this issue. So, any other questions or comments at this time? Okay, so let's place this on the action agenda, August 21st, 2017. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle.
(applause). All right, second item on our business agenda is going to be something presented to us by Public Works Director Craig Gregory, and it is a de-obligate of funds, so.
So, last week, we closed out the contractor portion of the Upper Mountain View Booster Pump and Water Line. Now we are starting down the process of closing out through the funding agency, which is Department of Health and the Drinking Water Fund. And originally, we had a loan amount of just over $9 million. We used about four and a half of that to construct that project after negotiations with Department of Health and the Drinking Water Fund. Original loan forgiveness for getting one of the four exempt wells disconnected and hooked up to the system originally was 23.25%, and after negotiations with them, they have increased that to 50%. And I do see a typo within this in the budget information. The maximum loan forgiveness of that 50% is half of what we have used, that 4.5 million, and the max loan forgiveness is 2.25. So it's not like we could continue to use that loan amount for this project or any other project and get that 50% loan forgiveness moving forward. So we are asking to try to finalize this and de-obligate the 4.5 million that we did not use back to Department of Health so that they can use that for a different project that they may have slated.
Questions or comments?
I had a question about under the loan security condition, and this is just something that I'm not real familiar with. In reading that, it says that the revenue obligation of the contractor payable solely from the net revenue of the water system payments shall be made from the net revenue of the utility after the payment of the principal and interest, and on and on. Does that mean that that's required to be paid through the utility rates?
Essentially, that's exactly what it means, is yes. Those loan payments need to be paid through the rates.
Okay, and, okay, that was my question, because that's certainly how it appeared.
That is the correct interpretation of that.
Thank you.
And I think for public information, we need to have a little explanation why we are wanting to do this at this time. And so, I think we've talked about it a little bit in the past, why we don't want to continue forward with this project.
We have not seen a need at this point to move forward with any additional phases of this project. Originally, it's been, it was an ongoing conversation of whether to rehab or drill a new well one. a new well one and also an additional storage tank up in that area with a booster pump station. But it doesn't appear at this point that we are in need of any of that infrastructure. So I think originally, the thought was to use the full $9 million and construct all of that, plus there were some additional funds that were needed through all of those phases. And without needing those at this point, sending back the 4.5 million, I think, is the right thing to do for this utility.
And do we have any estimates as to, is there any way of projecting when we would need that additional, additional tank or a new well? I realize the well is working well right now.
We will talk more about the well a little later in, in the department update, but yes, the well seems to be doing just fine. And I think as far as locating a well on that side of town, the three wells that we have right now are in close proximity to each other, so I'm not sure that that's necessarily the focus. It would probably be a focus on the south side of town for additional storage.
Okay.
And a new well. So I don't think that site necessarily is what we would be focusing on at this point.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I have no more further questions, so it appears that we concur to place this on the action agenda of August 21st, 2017. Next is going to be again Craig Gregory to talk to us about a vacation, which I'd need really bad.
Yes. So we have been approached by the Schusters on, that are located at 407 Grant Avenue, and they are proposing to vacate 4th Street, which connects or would connect Grant Street to Kenneale. That street runs through a very large ravine that's approximately 40 or 50 feet deep. So at this point, Public Works staff would be in favor of this vacation. We don't see any use moving forward in the future for any road connections or utility connections through that area. So for them to be able to utilize that, it would be an even split of the 60-foot right away between the Schusters and the adjacent property owner next door to them.
Questions or comments?
I drove up there and looked at this, and looking at the map, I thought, well, I don't know, that doesn't look that bad. But when I looked at it in person, the topography is quite extreme in differences there.
It is a very deep ravine.
Yeah. So I, that makes perfect sense to me to vacate that portion.
Okay. It appears that we concur to place this on the action agenda for August 21st, 2017. Next is a proposed permit fee schedule option, and this is going to be presented by staff.
We have one more for limited access.
Boy, following down the line, it just looks like I okayed one too many. All right. So waiver, so you're going to talk to us about a waiver.
So Washdott Local Programs has approached us with the potential new configuration up at the 101 and Wallace-Nielan interchange where Hall Equities is located. They have approached us with limiting access within that off-ramp, on-ramp area. So basically, what that means is we would not propose, and it's the three property owners that are in that area, Hall Equities, Brainerd, and ourselves, that we would not propose or come back to Washdott to have any driveways or accesses within that project limitation area. So at this point, I don't see any need for access for the city of Shelton, other than the on-ramp, off-ramp that's proposed there. So we would propose to move forward without a public hearing. And with a public hearing, if we decided to move forward, I don't know that we would get much comment, and it would take time and money to move forward with that. So right now, we are looking to move forward with this with recommendation from Washdott without a public hearing.
Questions or comments?
I, I had a meeting with members from Washdott last week, and they explained this to me, as well as staff has explained this to me. And while normally, I would promote a public hearing on basically everything, I think that we have had a number of public comments on the property and that this particular project falls outside the scope of any concerns that have ever been expressed. And so I am in favor of waiving the public hearing for this.
I also agree that it is not necessary at this time to do that, and so we concur to place this on the action agenda for August 21st, 2017. Now we've come to the proposed permit, permit fee changes. I'll just turn it over to staff.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. We're going to touch on some of the things that we've talked about before and then talk about some additional information that we're bringing forward. I think the last time we discussed this was about a month and a half ago. We brought forward four options at that time, and we're asked to research a fifth option, which we did. And looking at those options, we're bringing back to you two of those options today, and I'll talk a little bit about what we didn't bring back. So we didn't hear a lot of support for keeping permit and utility charges the same. We didn't feel like we heard a lot of support for returning them back to 2015 levels overall. We also looked at the potential that we took our renewal program idea and zeroed out the fees and charges for the renewal properties, but increased the other lots or other properties 20%. The issue with that and why we're not bringing it back this time is because we couldn't figure out a way to pay for the components of the renewal property side. And in doing so, what we brought back is one option, which is 20% more than they are right now, and then the renewal program, which is zero fees and charges for renewal properties, and then all the other lots would, or other properties would go back to the 2015 levels. In addition, we brought forward some more information you see on the final sheet. We're able to get home and duplex permit numbers from, I believe, Centrilia, we didn't have last time. So we have that back through 2006. And then Aberdeen was able to give us 15 and 16, but they weren't able to give us the years prior. So the information on this sheet is the same as before, except for we've added in Centrilia and Aberdeen in addition to our numbers back through 2006. And then bouncing back to the second page that you have in front of you, we can go down and talk about some of the more, the more components that we have included with the Shelton renewal program. So the first one, we just discussed, where there'd be zero permit fees and charges for projects that are targeted for renewal development. And then the rest of the properties in town would return to 2015 levels. We've identified an estimated 130 properties, of which 105 are residential, 25 are commercial, and these are a mix. Primarily, they have dwellings on them now. Some of them are empty lots that previously had some sort of building on them. An example might be the Timber Bowl or the hotel that burned down last year. These are infill lots that we, we've heard that there's a push from commission in the past to get some redevelopment in those areas. In addition to that, we're asking that a $25,000 investment be made for disposal fee incentives. What this would look like, we've estimated from the disposals that we've done for abatement lots have cost about $3,000 for a standard property, and this would be about, well, close to half that, $1,250. The city would kick in for somebody that does tear down one of these properties and build something that would improve that neighborhood. Additionally, we're looking at $15,000 that would be invested in stock home plans. So these would be reproducible plans that the city purchases. And in doing so, we would look to partner with local realtors, as well as Olympia Master Builders has offered to come in and provide some guidance. What we'd look for from them would be ideas about what type of plans, or if we set out a couple dozen plans and had them find plans that they believe are marketable in this area of various sizes and, and price points, we would purchase three to five reproducible stock plans, and they would be available to anyone in the community. So anybody that builds using one of these stock plans would not only save that cost where they wouldn't have to have plans designed, but they would also be eligible for two-week permit turnaround time. And that's something that we think is good for us, not only because it helps us get those plans in and out, but it also does not create an issue where we have people, we have projects backing up because we're reviewing these plans. In addition, I wasn't here when the changes were made last spring, but I noticed when I came on, there wasn't a lot of promotion that went on with the fact that the rates had been cut. So we would also want to actively promote this program, as well as identifying a goal. And we've thrown out a draft goal of 10 of these renewal projects in the next 12 months. We didn't provide you an update, I think, until it'd been about a year. I may have done some brief updates in between, but this is something that if we went forward with this, we would certainly want to bring back more information as we go along. Those are the two plans, one being just a straight 20% increase that would be adjusted for different areas, but 20% overall. And then the second idea is the renewal program, which is the same as before, but we've added in some of the further details that we talked about a month and a half ago.
All right. Well, we're in, still in the process of negotiating and talking and looking at these things. I mean, we're not going to vote on things today.
Nope.
And one of our commissioners isn't here, but I had spent some time thinking about this a lot, and so, and so.
Mark can talk a little bit about workload, because I know that cost recovery was one of the issues that came up when we were talking earlier.
Absolutely. I think, I think there is a, the, there is a concern, I guess, with keeping up with, with the growth that we're somewhat seeing now over the last few years. Back in the start of the recession, we certainly had a greater staff that could handle our permit processes. We had a building inspector, building inspector in training, code enforcement officer that handled inspections as well when we needed that, and a permit technician. Right now, we have a, we have a building inspector, and then our permit tech is handled through our front, front counter staff, so they're handling all the phone calls and everything else that comes through our counter as well. So being able to process permits in a timely manner is certainly something that we have concerns with, especially when we have $65 million in school projects coming down the pike, potentially some other commercial projects that might come in the hopper at the same time. That'll certainly impact single-family residences, remodels, all of those permits that we're currently processing at an average of, you know, 370 a year or something like that with the existing staff we have. If we contract out for plan review services like we have prior to the hiring of our building inspector, our current rates could not pay for that service. We would be paying an additional amount outside of what we would bring in on those plan review services. So that certainly is a concern for, for the building department's budget, being able to, be able to manage that, that piece of our department.
Do we have an estimated arrival time for the beginning of the school projects and also the hospital project?
The schools are hoping to submit in February.
Okay.
Yeah. Their, their intent is to have, there's the Mountain View Elementary and Shelton High School projects done and completed for the beginning of the 2019 school year. It's their indication with staff. They, they haven't submitted yet, they haven't gone through pre-submission conferences at this point, so they're, I'd say they're a little better than informal discussions, obviously, because they're under design, but that's, that's the indication we're getting from them at this point.
And we know they're coming.
They're coming, yes.
And how about the hospital? Do we have any idea of what, when the hospital will be submitted?
We don't have an indication from it at this point.
Okay. But we know that's coming. So, okay. Thank you.
This is, some thoughts I had, and I just gave them over here. Well, we started this, and I was so excited when we did because I think it did help spur some, some growth. But one of the things that caught my attention is that we talk about returning to 2015 levels. And what, from the information that staff has provided, is that where we were on 2015 is our, all of our fees equaled $17,922. And the average amongst all of our like cities around us, that average number was $13,208. And I actually believe one of the reasons why we only did a couple of homes a year for 10 years was because we were $5,000 more than our other cities around. So when we talk about returning to 2015 levels, that means if we did that today, we would want to, we would then be $5,000 more than the other like cities around us. Am I on the same page with people? Is that?
For these three cities, we would be. One thing we've looked at is comparing our, we don't have the same utilities that the county has, but Mason County had the same permit fee schedule that we did, and they are looking at increasing their fees at this point.
Well, I'm sure everybody has. So, but I am truthful in saying that the cities of like Port Orchard, Centrilia, and Aberdeen, that, and us, I guess, including that, that the average is $13,000.
We weren't included, but those other three cities, the average was $13,000.
$13,000. And our 2015 levels, which may have been there for a number of years, I don't know, was almost $18,000. So that's approximately $5,000 more for the average. I mean, that's just a fact. And so I, I definitely think we need to raise them, and I would support, one thing I would support is raising 20%, and I think that's, that would be for a one-year period. And then actually, I would probably say at this moment, if, as, as, not definite, but raising them 25% then in 2019. So what would be, according to my figures, in a 16, 16-month period from today, we would actually be at a rate that was equal to what the average cities are. Now, they may go up, too, over this next 16 months, but this is a number, $13,000, I think is a lot closer number to have, to pay, to have something done if, based upon the other cities. I mean, that's the average, you know, and I don't know why we would, we would charge $5,000 more. That's my concern. So I think what I would propose is raising the 20%, and that would, you know, we would catch the hospitals and whatnot, we would get some added income from that. And then I would seriously look at one year from now, going up another 25% or who knows, because of staff. I mean, I understand, I was a builder for a few years, and I do understand that waiting around for three months for building permit is not fun, or even two months. So, and, but staff has to, those, at the moment, where we're building, I mean, we are now doing okay, but, you know, with the hospital and everything coming on, that would be more work, I'm sure. So I don't know, I'm not really personally sold on the, on the idea of zero fees on, on like vacant lots, or even on some commercial pieces of property where someone might, I can see zero fees on whether something needs to be torn down, but I don't know why we would do a zero fee on a vacant lot. I think the vacant lots are going to go fairly quick over the next couple of years, especially if we start ramping up our fees. I think builders are going to take advantage of that. And so is, am I missing something on the zero fees on vacant lots?
Vacant lots, the number's pretty small, and the vacant lots that we're talking about had something on them within the last few years. These are primarily properties that had something burned down. We abated a property, but we can get the numbers back, but out of the 130, there weren't very many that were actually vacant.
Sure. So I, I wouldn't give zero fees to hardly anything other than something that, look, if this is really ugly, let's give them an advantage to clean up our city and do it. I don't think I would stretch that zero myself, you know, further beyond that one. And I think that also, I'm changing the formula, the formula at the moment is that the building department, something, one was 30, Public Works and Building, one was 30, one was 72. So I think we might want to look at that formula because it looks like the, the Public Works Department got beat up a little bit on that one. So these are just ideas that, you know, in coming to a decision, I think I am 100% behind raising the fees 20% on, let's say, January 1st, 2018, with the anticipation that then it's probably going to go up from there. And I think our raises should be, though, should be in line with other cities because we want to keep building. And I think part of our problem in the 2015 and before was that we were at $18,000 when other cities' average was closer to 13. So I think my ramble is pretty well where I'm thinking about this, and, and I know that Commissioner Moore has ideas, and I'm sure that Commissioner McDowell has ideas, too. Where do we go from here?
Okay. So I'm trying to, I'm, I'm looking at the, the comparisons of the different cities, and then I was looking on here, it does, it looks like Aberdeen's average is crazy low, and yet they're showing the least growth, except for 2015. the least growth, except for 2015.
Craig's talked to Aberdeen.
I talked to their utility manager, and yes, they have had very little growth. Actually, he has been going back to the commission or their council, trying to get those permit fees raised because they are, they are literally averaging about one house a year, and it's just not making sense at this point. So they are losing some revenue out of that one house that they are getting, and it doesn't seem to be spurring growth in Aberdeen.
So, yeah, so their fees are like two-thirds less than what our 2015 fees were, and there's still no, no growth. So I think we can't look at fees alone to do the comparison. And I did have some questions. Where did the 20% come from? I know that in your proposal a couple of weeks ago, also that you used the 20%, and is that like a breakpoint, or where did the 20% come from?
That was from commission direction, from conversations with commissioners.
So there's no reason for 20% as far as, it's just a number?
It was one of the ideas that came to us, so putting back to 2015, came to us through commission discussion. Increasing 20% came to us through commission discussion, and then from those, staff got together and discussed this renewal program idea.
Oh, okay. Okay, was there a reason 20%?
I think I, well, I don't know, I did, I talked about 20%, and these are individual discussions with Ryan Wheaton and staff. I did think it was a year, and we accomplished 24 permits or something, you know, in 18 months or something, and I felt that it was time to start creeping it up, and I think we'll probably see more activity because of it. I think you've got to get paid for what you do, but I also know that at, my, I think one of our biggest problems during the recession is we were at $18,000, and in the middle of recession, that should, this should have been addressed like 10 years ago, I think. I mean, you know, and, but I think that raising it instead of just, okay, let's all go back to 2015 levels, I just don't think we're there yet.
So it was just an incremental increase?
Yeah, and it was probably a compromise from fully, you know, going back to 2015 levels. I think my idea is to, over a year or two, to kind of start moving it up, you know, and I think that I feel comfortable with a 20%. I think that would, you know, a couple steps and we're back to where the average is, but...
Okay, several years, but, okay.
Actually, 16 months.
So going, moving forward, more questions. Are the 2015 rates for the remaining lots that are not identified under option B, my questions are about option B at this point, do we think that that would be sufficient for supporting the projects and the renewal program?
What we looked at, where the goal of being 10 a year, we think that it would be sufficient. Now, that we've looked at specifically TIF and building permit fees, and you guys can talk a little bit about what those look like if, with the two projects that we know are coming next year.
Well, go ahead. You're referring to the schools?
Yeah.
Yeah, schools and potentially the hospital. There's certainly significant revenue that would, that would come in off of those fees because they're big projects, and projects are based on valuation. So, you know, the larger the project, the more expensive it is to build, the higher the permit fee. It certainly is a heck of a lot more work.
Yeah.
Also, plan review and inspections on a hospital, but they certainly can generate some revenue, offset the costs for the department as a whole because there's not as much time spent on a single-family residence re-roof, you know, windows, garages, and things like that. So it certainly could offset that, those fees, but ultimately, the value in putting another building, you know, on a blighted lot or a tear-down certainly, certainly will carry over and create some, some more interest in those neighborhoods, and it might, you know, in effect, create more investment in those, in those neighborhoods in the city as a whole as well.
Okay, so we're assuming we will have enough, or we will have a number...
That's why we talked about 10 as well.
Yeah, okay.
That's why, you know, kind of the target at 10 because we believe that's manageable. If it's success, we can bring it back to the commission at that point and certainly address it and analyze it at that point, but it certainly is something that has to be monitored. We monitor it on a case-by-case basis, so every permit that comes in, every fee that's associated with a renewal lot would be, would be managed, and we'd have the costs associated with that, so we could provide the commission with updates on a regular basis on how successful and the impacts it is on our budgets.
I think Mark hit it right on the head too when he was talking about revenue. When you certainly look at traffic impact fees and the utilities, the citizens voted in a, the TBD funds, and with the hospital project alone, you're talking about almost half of the annual TBD funds that you would be bringing in.
Oh, thank God.
Just in that one project. So you're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars difference between option B and option A. And then when you look at the utilities, really, it comes down to essentially what Mark said was revenue, and you start talking about our utility rates, and this really is a rate reduction that we have right now because it's, it's revenue that would be coming in through these, and when you lower the GFCs, it's the same as what you would be charging your customers with rates. It's a charge that brings in revenue. So any, anytime you look at that, we have less revenue coming in.
Okay, okay, so those costs are passed along to the repairs?
They have to be passed along somewhere.
Okay.
That's part of the discussion for bringing this forward before we talk about that rate update. We're going to bring that in the next couple of weeks. But part of this discussion is that when we bring back to you guys, we'll ask you what components of the rate model do you want to remove or add when we look at infrastructure. We also need to tell the companies doing that study what we're going to charge for these because there is a bit of a balancing act between GFCs and monthly rates, that if one of them stays at a certain level, it could impact the other one.
Okay. So continue, I'm sorry, I have three pages of questions. So how will the, how will the lots be identified, and especially, yeah, how are the lots going to be identified?
We've made preliminary identification based on city utilities. So we looked at, had, did a query through city utilities on vacant or dormant accounts, and so we've got a pretty good idea on, on how many houses have been vacant or turned off or not utilizing utility service at this point. That gave us kind of a baseline. We certainly need to do a little more research. We've talked to some local realtors about, you know, foreclosure lists and things like that, and then it's really going to have to be, you know, some work out on the streets too, and identifying these properties, examining the list that we have put together, and certainly refining it a little more with some, with some commission direction.
Okay. I would definitely like to see the lot spread throughout the city so that we're not creating a gentrification of one particular area at the expense of some others, so I think that's an important...
They were pretty widespread throughout the city.
Okay. And then as part of this, as looking at the renewal program, all demo permits are not created equally, and so I realize we have the zero fees there, and I assume that would include the demo permits as well as, you know, that portion of the disposal. But have we thought about those demos that cost more because of workout requirements, you know, such as those who...
Yeah, yeah, we have, and that certainly would fall on, fall on the contractor or the owner because we couldn't control that. That certainly could get out of control with a large amount of asbestos or some other material in there, so that would, that would fall upon the property owner. And the disposal fee could be used to, for abatement of the asbestos possibly and disposal of that, or it could be, you know, any materials that might go to the landfill in a regular manner. I think it doesn't really make much difference to us if, if the end product is removing a blighted structure.
So what we're looking at is the 1,250 per property?
Correct.
So they can, okay, okay, thanks. And then looking at the stock plans, I love stock plans. I am so in favor of that for bringing costs down as well as making it a more efficient way of getting the permits out. But I think that we need more than realtors to be consulted in that. Specifically, I'm concerned about properties that would be in historic neighborhoods and that we have stock plans that would definitely fill the role of what would be needed in, to fit into neighborhoods, so, as well as ADA requirements, which, you know, I'm sure you've thought about that, but we, we have historic preservation ordinance, we have a certified local government, so I would like to make sure that we don't lose sight of the options for rehabilitation versus tear-down and replace. And so there are tax incentives that we can offer, and I just would like to make sure that we promote that as, for buildings that it would be appropriate for. I'm not saying everything should be rehabilitated, but I would hate to see, hate for us to lose the character of some of our older neighborhoods. And also, as far as in stock plans, I would love to ultimately see that go forward one way or another, and I would like for those to include smaller homes and garages, et cetera. I think we could maybe do that.
We've had some work done in the past. The department had some carport stock plans done.
Yes.
I still have some work to do on that.
Oh, okay.
To see, to see where exactly that ended, but there was some work done through the department on carports. We don't see a whole lot of them, but it certainly is something that, that could get somebody out the door, you know, and, and eliminate some of the confusion, especially with homeowners that might want to build themselves or small contractors, having, without going to a design professional and getting, getting a plan when essentially it's, it's a, you know, a standard-sized garage that would, that would fit into most houses or most lots, and being able to provide that service to them in a reasonable...
Yeah. Well, I think predictability in itself really increases the option, increases the, like, the possibility of more development and more improvements. And then the 10 projects, that will be something we will discuss later as far as, at 10 projects, do we decide to go forward, or do we say it's a success, or...
That would be something that you would determine. What we want to identify is that if that's the goal, if there was another goal, that we're bringing back information monthly to let you know where we are. We don't, we wouldn't want to have one of two things happen.
Okay.
Either we get 20 of these first month and we're scrambling because all of these funds have been expended, or that we have zero for the first eight months, and then we took too long to figure out that it didn't work.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I just had a couple more comments from moving through this, and number one is just to reiterate that we are a certified local government, and part of our charge is to promote historic preservation and maintaining the character of our city. So I'm, I'm really concerned about incentivizing demo rather than rehabilitation, and so just making sure that we do promote the tax credits and the incentives for rehab. And then if, if this is looking at option A, if the 20% fee increase is not adequate, what does that do to our general fund and what ramifications if we continue down that road? I'm also concerned with the transportation improvement fund, is that it? Transportation Improvement Fund costs, I think I used the wrong acronym, being 0%, which under option B, the commercial potential negative impacts to be passed on to the city residents. So, and I do consider that to be honestly a lack of faith to those who voted for the transportation benefit district to continue on with zero, zero for those fees. And then I think we need to ask what the potential impact is, and does the benefit outweigh the, the negative impact according to use even in commercial, like depending on what the use of the commercial building is. Obviously, a small office building is not going to create the same impacts as a commercial building. So those, those were my questions and comments, and I, I'm excited by the potential for option B.
On the stock plan option or idea that we're looking at, I was a builder that had five or six or seven stock plans in my portfolio, and some of them, I built 10 of. And what, what I would hate to do is that we, and I don't know exactly how you're planning this, but I would not have a city design or, or offer a plan. I would have a customer offer a plan because architects get paid for drawing plans, and if the city, on a garage, I can understand, carports, I don't have a problem with that, but on, on little homes, you know, I don't know, I've never heard of a city, you know, supplying a plan. It would also, could, in support of Tracy Moore's idea on historical value on architectural kinds of things, the way I did it, I paid an architect designing a set of plans, and then every time I wanted, I just used it and I resubmitted it, and it was approved by the local municipality to, to do that, and it worked really well. And, you know, I mean, so I'm not sure about the city designing or doing that. I'm thinking that might come from the person, like a builder, it's excellent.
We have some that do that now.
Some are doing that now.
We have a stock plan policy now, and so we have builders that have stock plans. The idea is that we would go to a design professional architect to, to design, design the plans.
The city would.
The city would, exactly right, with, with a committee, interested parties made up of the master builders, realtors, anybody else that might be interested and involved in that process to kind of get an idea of what the market bears, what kind of houses might fit in a certain area, and try to get a general consensus on a number of plans that makes sense at least upfront. So somebody didn't have to go to an architect, didn't have those fees upfront. We, as well as, it didn't require the plan review each and every time. If we have a stock plan in place, the plan review is much more simple for staff to get through and issue those permits, and it really speeds up the process.
Sure, absolutely. And I'm not an architect, but I would think if I was an architect sitting in this room right now, I would not be thrilled with the city having a plan that people can use for free or something, you know. I mean, I'm just thinking outside the box.
You're paying more for those reproducible sets, though.
Yeah, but you're not paying the architect to design the home. I mean...
If that one's a sticking point, it is certainly something that we could remove.
I don't know, I'm just thinking outside the box on it. It's not a, you know, I'm not, I'm just kind of thinking the way I did it, and then what the city, how the city would provide these things and stuff. So I would have a conversation with an architect about that one, just to see what they thought about. Maybe they could, we could work with a local architect or something that would want to do that, but that one's kind of out there. The other point is, and, is that when we're talking about this, these fees and charges for areas not targeted, we'll return, whatever says we'll return to 2015 levels, as I've shown on my little drawing, I'm really thinking if we replace the return to 2015 levels, return to the average, the $13,000 rather than the $18,000, which is a average amongst our like cities. That's where my mind would want to take it, rather than to the 18, because, you know, I just think that's awfully high. So I'm not sure I understand exactly what those targeted things were. We've kind of talked about a lot of different things. Those are my concerns. I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think we can, this commission can come up with something that's going to work for the city, you know, but I don't think it's something that, I think we still need some conversation about it. Because I know I presented this concept to you guys, and Tracy Moore has said a lot of wonderful things about how she kind of thinks about it. There's another commissioner that can weigh in on this, and I just think anything with that $18,000, 2015 levels, I don't think it's fair to the people that are coming to help us build our city to charge $5,000 more than our other cities on an average. That's my, my thinking on it. So that's all I have to say today about this subject. Anybody else?
I had one more question. Is there a precedence for city-provided stock plans?
We haven't called around. I'm trying to think how this came about.
It came out because of the carport and garage.
Yeah, I know we were working on that, and we've also talked about providing stock plans for time... And we've also talked about providing stock plans for tiny homes or smaller individual homes, too.
And it really stemmed from the turnaround time, too. If we wanted to guarantee turnaround time, we couldn't guarantee two weeks with somebody coming with a set of plans off the shelf because, you know, there's too many variables that it might not be an approvable plan. And then we're kicking it back and essentially you've got the same review time again for the next submittal. Whereas if we had a stock plan, those are approvable, the engineering's there, we can kick those out the door in a timely manner and then we can guarantee the two weeks or a timeframe that the commission's comfortable with to get somebody off and running and on their project as soon as possible.
For this component, it was the turnaround time. Then also, we've heard, those are the two things we've heard, turnaround time and the cost to the customer. And this was a way for us to have a relatively small investment but potentially benefit everybody that accesses these stock plans. You don't have to have one of these renewal properties to utilize the stock plans. Anybody could use them.
That's a great point, yeah.
And if we're estimating about $3,000 per plan, then it's a fairly good bang for your buck for what we invest in.
Yeah. As a former permit technician, I will say that I love stock plans. It really reduces the margin of error for sure. And I have one more thing. I know this is on the action agenda for next week and since I will be gone, I would ask that we put that off.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready for it.
Okay.
I mean, I need more discussions.
I would point out, this is the fourth time we briefed and this, as we move into budget season, we're going to have a difficult time projecting Mark's department and part of Craig's department unless we get a decision before we get heavily involved with those. So we can bring it back, probably three weeks is the next time there's another action agenda. So if you have questions between now and then, we can get those answered at the next briefing.
Absolutely. I think that would be great.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So at this point, we're going to talk about it...
Whenever the next, well, we can bring it back to the briefing in two weeks and if we have questions then, we can certainly ask them.
Because I think my concept is that I got some of these four options, I got some things a little bit out of all of them a little bit. So I think I need to see if we can look at that.
We did look at the option of having the zero fee for renewal lots and increasing the other lots 20%. And in talking with NOLA about the potential that we could pay for those renewal lots, we didn't feel that the revenue would be there and that we might be setting ourselves up for a disappointment when we came back.
All right. Okay, so that concludes that part of our program. Next is administration reports.
I'm turning it over to our IT manager, Tim.
Mayor Cronson, Commissioner Moore, the city has needed to replace its phone system for years. We currently have a Nortel Meridian system installed and we've had to hire a vendor for the past few years just to maintain it. And even the simplest change, adding a new phone or moving a phone to another desk, required a vendor to come in to the city offices to make that change for us. So we were not able to do that on our own. And so we began the project to look for a vendor to replace the phone system. At the end of last year, we formed a team and met regularly to review possible phone vendors, their product offerings, and we watched quite a few product demonstrations online. The team published a request for proposal in June and we received seven proposals from vendors. We went through the process of reviewing those proposals. We scored them and narrowed it down to three vendors. And from those three finalists, the city has chosen Hood Canal Communications, HCC, to provide and install and support the city's new phone system. That phone system that HCC will install is manufactured by a U.S. firm, S-Tech Systems Incorporated from Plano, Texas. And they have engineered, supplied and supported business phone systems for over 30 years. Their product is a flexible hybrid phone system, meaning that we can, irregardless of what type of phone we need to install, whether it's a digital, an analog, or a voice-over-IP phone, this system can handle that. And it is a sophisticated solution to our communications problems and yet it's going to be simple for our users to operate. And pairing with the outstanding service that we've had from HCC over the years from the city, as our communications and internet service provider, we feel that we've selected the best communications option to solve our problems. Work will begin to install the server hardware and begin programming the system soon and we plan to complete the project in early September. So do you have any questions or comments?
Good job.
Thank you.
That's been a topic of conversation for a number of years now.
Yes.
So we no longer have to do the turn the dial on the thing?
Well, your phone is...
We were just a step above that.
Oh, well, it's pretty amazing to have a working fund system and direct deposit. So moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tim failed to mention that our one person at the city who could help us with the phone system retired two weeks ago.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm sure we can figure it out. All right, next. Whoever wants to be lucky.
I don't have a whole lot for you today, so thank you. We're still working with Tyler Technologies on the intergov and insight installation. There's a couple of puzzle pieces we still need to get sorted out with that. And that will be the software that links into our financial software that relates to permitting and utility billing, being able to see more utility bills, et cetera. So we're still working on that. The state auditor's office has a representative here and she has been working on the 2015 audit. She's also going to start working in September on the 2016 audit. So we're playing catch-up, getting things back to current, but we're not quite there yet. So far, what I'm hearing from the auditor is 2015 looks good. So that was good news today. We're working on putting some finishing touches on some 2016 finance reports and we hope to be able to publish those within a week or two. We're getting there. And we're launching into budget season and we'll be talking, of course, in more detail tomorrow about the budget. So we'll be focusing on doing a 2017 budget amendment as well as starting to think about the 2018 budget process. That's all I have. Any questions?
Nine o'clock tomorrow morning at the transit center.
Be there.
I'll be there.
Okay.
All right. Next.
So I want to just thank a couple individuals or groups. Jerry in Community Service, I want to thank her for, we finally got our fisheries permit to Clean Creeks and all of our creeks around town, including the one on Franklin Street in front of MTA, has been flooded with water press for quite some time. So she got her group in there and...
Great.
... both of our creeks out. Just want to thank her and all the hard work that she does. Also want to thank NOLA and her group for continuing to give us all of the information that we need to move forward with the water comp plan. I know that's a daunting task at times to get all of the revenues and expenditures for really everything in the water department. And they've done a fantastic job getting that out to us in a timely fashion to keep us moving on the water comp plan. Another positive that came out of the Franklin Street reconfiguration, the need for the rapid flasher was, we didn't feel that it was needed on that roadway, so we have taken that down quite some time ago and we are reinstalling that on Wallace Nealon up at Beach Drive.
Great.
I think that is something that has been needed up there for quite some time. So you should see that in the next week after two weeks, but definitely before school starts up there.
Can I interject a comment there? I love that Franklin Street now. It's not confusing. There's no big concrete thing for me to hit. I just walk around, I go and I drive my car either way I want to go. And so I think that was one of the greatest things you've done.
It's a regular street.
It's just a normal...
I think Ryan prompted that one, so...
Ryan did it? All right, well...
It wasn't a Thursday?
Yeah, she says, "Go get that big concrete chunk out of there." Well, anyway, I like that.
It's a normal street again. But yeah, that rapid flash, I think, will be fantastic up on Wallace Nealon. It has been needed for quite some time. That overhead that just flashes crosswalk all the time, even if there's nobody in it, isn't really working, so I think this would be a good move forward.
I could show it on your report, sorry. You can go back.
Oh, thanks.
Did you have more?
Yes, there is more. I will try and keep it short, though.
That's all right.
TIB grant, $50,000 winter damage grant is complete. We have completed all of that work and we are working again with NOLA's team to get that filled out and off to TIB for reimbursement. I guess you could either take this as good news or bad news. There's some growth at the top of North Cliff. Originally, when we extended the sewer line from the top of North Cliff down close to the creek at the bottom, there was six connections available. At this point, we have no connections available. All six of those have been used up by property owners in that area. So we have heard some concern about other properties needing connections up there, but at this point, Department of Ecology is not granting us any additional connections. So at this point, until basically moves forward and we get that completed, we won't see a whole lot going on there, I don't believe.
So those are the properties that are actually in the urban growth area that have been developed? Are there any in the city?
There is one that's on the city limit side, the south side of North Cliff, but the majority of them have been, yes, in the county on the Artisan Hills project and also a property just down to the west of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but we are having interest from people in the city who would like to develop their lots and connect to sewer?
Most of them are in the county portion. We haven't talked about the angle side booster pump station lately, but a little bit of, again, maybe good news and bad news. We had a very large structural fire up in the area of 16th and Turner. During the duration of that firefight that we had up there, we did not see any produced pressure and did not use the booster pump station at all. So...
I mean, that sounds good to me. What was the bad news?
The bad news is we still have to figure out what we are going to do with the angle side booster pump station since it doesn't appear that it is needed up there at this point. So we are still working on that, moving through that, but I think it just solidified that the function that we thought we were going to get out of that or need isn't really coming true at this point.
Go ahead.
Also, with the really dry summer, we have been taking a look at our wells and the use of those to make sure that everything is adequate right now for the citizens of Chilton. And at this point, wells three and four are running daily on an average around, in the mid to high teens per day. And well one is running approximately seven to eight hours a day. And we have not seen a substantial drawdown at this point to make us weary of using any of those wells. So those are functioning just fine.
Wonderful news. Good.
Moving forward. Hopefully, we get some rain more than we got on Saturday.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, all of those wells seem to be functioning just fine.
Great.
Well, to the rain thing, if you don't get a whole lot of rain, then what happens is the city's getting all this income from me watering my garden every night. So you've got to understand, do you really want the rain or do you want the income? What do you want? Because you're getting the extra income.
At this point, we'd take some rain.
I think you should. Forget about that profit motivation there. But I am having, I'm sure my bills are going way up because I've got to water my garden quite a bit, you know, so.
Yes.
Anyway, did I cut you off? That did it right?
That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. And now our city manager, did he have something else to present?
Nothing today.
Nothing today. Our next meeting will be August 21st, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the evening. This meeting is adjourned.
Remember, don't look at the eclipse.
Unless you've got welder's goggles on.